Hi, thank you for joining us for the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for June 14th, 2021. We do have live viewing. We are in person today in council chambers and we will be entertaining those that come to our meeting with a purpose, one at a time. So with that, we will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and then Mr. Helms will give our invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We pray that you'll be with us tonight, you'll guide us, direct us, give us wisdom to conduct the town's business fairly and honestly. We give you the praise and the glory for it all. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right. Council members, you have been presented the minutes of the May 24th Town Council Meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions that need to be made? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Hearing that and knowing that we have folks, would it be all right with everyone if we... Do you want me to jump to the public hearing now, or do you prefer for me to go ahead with the two presentations?
Let's do the presentations.
Do the presentations? All right. Just don't want it to rain on anybody. Present... Hmm? All right. Presentation number one. It is my pleasure to be able to reappoint with council and the town, Mr. Kyle Hobbs, as our municipal judge for the Town of Fort Mill. Mr. Hobbs has been an excellent addition to the town. He has served us very well in the past and we couldn't be happier to do this swearing in. So Kyle, if you'll come up to the front. You know, you hand me that box. You get them. Let me scroll it up. Could you let me hold it for you?
That'd be fine.
All right.
More than Mary.
Yeah, come on. Let's do it right.
We should be chatting together.
That's right. Why do you have to be here? This is the...
All right. Good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, Oath of Office for the Municipal Judge. I, Kyle M. Hobbs...
I, Kyle M. Hobbs...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution...
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties...
To exercise the duties.
Of the office...
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties...
Discharge those duties.
And will preserve...
And will preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As municipal judge.
As municipal judge.
Of the Town of Fort Mill...
The Town of Fort Mill.
I pledge to uphold the integrity...
I pledge to uphold the integrity.
And independence...
And independence.
Of the judiciary.
Of the judiciary.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties...
I pledge in the discharge of my duties...
To treat all persons...
To treat all persons.
To enter the courtroom...
To enter the courtroom.
With civility...
With civility.
Fairness...
Fairness.
And respect.
And respect.
I pledge to listen courteously...
I pledge to listen courteously.
Sit impartially...
Sit impartially.
Act promptly...
Act promptly.
And rule after careful...
And rule after careful.
And considerate deliberation.
And considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice...
I pledge to seek justice.
And justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you ever so much. We're so pleased to have you. We're just... Really, really glad to have you. Thank you so much, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[439.58]
Too many and to evaluate them. This foot.
And you're gonna need to approach the county since you live in the county. You'll need to ask the county for that assistance. Right now, that. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Norton?
I mean.
That would be Tom Odette.
Yeah, Tom Odette is your.
Can you contact Tom Odette, he's your county councilman.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, um, yeah. These cannot be construed as anything else. When you have actual condiles and articulations and, um, you know, what they should animal pad on or what it's going to have.
Okay.
Um.
We appreciate you, but we need to entertain the next one. Uh, we've gone over your three minutes.
I totally understand what you're saying. But I want you to keep in mind that this is. This one here, you will find this in the Smithsonian Institute.
Thank you.
On some of my habits.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate your effort.
And. You know, actually, the way you're speaking to me, I understand that money is more important in this world. You know, with building and development. But I am a scientist. I have a science degree. But I believe in creation versus evolution. And I believe that if this is not taken seriously, we could be losing significant history of our land and it will be completely destroyed forever. And I know that if someone I have is a remarkable finding that's any professional would have. I have health issues, conditions, why I'm dry mouth. I cannot use someone that could, um, contact these people. If I could have your assistance in doing so, or if you have any kind of interest at all, this is also your interest, I believe. Because if these are not checks, as I said, people will begin to destroy them and they will not ever be here again for future generations. And I'm sad that you can't come up and see with a sharp tooth look like.
Ma'am, we have to run the meeting. We have about twenty other people out there.
I totally understand.
I mean, I really hate, we can't, but we have any other of your neighbors trying to.
Right, and the neighbors are here because they, of course, they come. They call these, they want these to be checked.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your effort to bring those before us.
It's not an effort. It's what I feel that needs to be done in order to preserve our earth and to preserve our history. This is South Carolina. We have the opportunity to become one of the most historical states and countries. And this is a finding. So. People aren't interested in it. I believe it's very bad.
And we hope. We hope the museum will reach out to you and have that come out.
They will, because they will be, like I said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just trying to tell you thank you and good luck.
I know, but they said that five hundred billion years ago, I'm similar. The people of God and creation. Genesis says that six thousand years old is the earth. So if they would have looked outside the box, they would see all of this is authentic.
Thank you for coming.
Can we have this stand in here with? This is a preview of what's coming.
Yeah, we have to stick to the three minutes. I'm sorry, I think we've tried to be generous in the past.
There we go.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
Oh.
Hi, I think I recognize you. You've spoken before us before.
I have not.
You have.
I must have a wonderful face.
Then you must.
My name is Chris Johnny, this, I live on Marble Report.
Okay.
Email subdivision. Uh, I am the actual, I'm the president of the homeowners association, but I'm speaking just on behalf of myself and my wife. Um, I'm not gonna go into some of the other issues that my neighbors behind me are gonna talk about. And I, mine's gonna be really short, so I.
Yeah, three minutes.
I won't even leave the three. Um, I'm just asking you not to table the motion. I'm asking you to make a decision today. It is in my belief, we've been going through this for approximately two years now on the same piece of property. The issues have not changed. They've gotten worse since two schools have been built and the traffic has increased. Uh, I believe you have enough information. Many of you have been communicated directly via email and other meetings from neighbors in my community as to their opinions on why this should not be allowed to go through. I think you have enough information. The developers right now are looking to extend the time so they can try to get to more homeowners and then simply convince them why their approach is right for the area. Um, I don't, I welcome them to attempt that and I don't have any problem in them doing so.
So you have been amenable to speaking with the developers as well?
Yes, we have. We've actually, our property management company has offered to arrange for a meeting at, uh, convene, you know, where homeowners could go and listen to them. The HOA would not sanction the meeting and we could not hold it on the property of the community, but they could arrange for one. And I know she's been going back and forth even as late as today, as late as the afternoon, to give them the opportunity to do that. And this is since prior to the meeting of four weeks ago when this motion was on for discussion. And they have chosen not to do this at this point in time. They've gotten a little bit more anxious this afternoon, it appears, based on emails going back and forth. But I, we, I believe personally, my wife and myself, that they've had enough time to make their presentation, to explain their view. And I think you folks have enough information, having heard directly from residents, on why you should make a decision tonight. That's it.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
You said explain their view. Who are they going to explain their view to? To us or to you all?
Well, I'm not really sure, actually. I think they've already put the documentation they need before you as to the development. I know there's another person coming behind me who has some of their information to present. And the way we're looking at it in terms of traffic control and other issues, I know she will be coming in with that information, which is their information that they gave us. So again, we have given them the opportunity to do that. They have provided packets of information to several of our homeowners and to our management company. And that has been shared to any of the residents who've asked for it. I've asked for it and I've looked at it, looked it over as well. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Thank you. I wish I could speak to your group as a whole because I think it's very important to recognize you have a representative that is named Tom Odette. Uh, you're in the county. You're not in the town.
Right.
We are being gracious to try to hear your concerns and have in the past and will continue to do so, even though you're not part, you're not a citizen of the town of Fort Mill.
Right.
So, you know, I can appreciate each and everyone's interest in this. And I appreciate how you've handled yourself this evening in a respectful manner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Tracy Dixon, Thomas, Tracy Thomas Dixon. Um, I live in Whitley Mills, been there fifteen years. Grew up in Fort Mill. I know tons of faces up there, so good to see you guys. Um, I think, two things. I just wanna say that I'd love it if we could go ahead and get the vote done because keep delaying it and delaying it. It's just, and I'm not sure what they're gonna gain with that. So, and then I did bring some pictures in. But I think all of us, like I said, I've been on the board at Whitley Mills for a long time, but it's just this coming out onto the Whitley Road that's gonna be such a huge problem. This part, not a problem, but this part, you know, we're just concerned that there's gonna be so much traffic in about a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet, that right up into that light, uh, just pouring out onto there. And you guys in the mornings, if you ever come by, you'll just see the, and then when Seventy Seven was shut down, oh, you guys have it up there. But I mean, it's, Pleasant Road is not a fun place to be at. I mean, it used to be a country, a little road, but now it's like a three-way. So I guess we just ask that hopefully the vote will get made soon and then hopefully you'll consider all the fact that there's two major schools there and a lot of kids walking. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
See you later.
Good to see you too.
Davie, will you make sure that Virginia adds to that paragraph that each person can have three minutes when I read? Hi.
Hello, I'm on Whitley Mills Road. I know I was here last time. I don't wanna take up a lot of your time.
You have three minutes.
I don't have to. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that we've had a hundred and fifty collisions on Pleasant Road. We've had a child killed. We've had a child injured. Um, we have nine hundred residents as are approved on Pleasant Road. Um, the traffic study does not take safety into consideration. I called COT again this week just to make sure I did not interfere them and that's what I was told. Um, and I just also wanted to make sure you all received this letter that one of my neighbors sent to you today. This is from the, um, it's from Everett Barbie. He's the district for traffic control supervisor for the Portland School District. Um, and what he says is, "I'm writing with much concern about the development that is proposed for Pleasant and Whitley Road. I am the traffic control crosswalk supervisor for district for schools in Fort Mill. Both of these roads are very busy and dangerous now, without adding to it. I have been here seven years and have witnessed hundreds of close calls with heavy traffic and speeders. We have had people hit and even killed. I urge the council to reconsider and vote against this project." Again, we just have lots of concerns with the traffic and the safety. We've reviewed the stuff from the developers. It doesn't really address our safety concerns. The extra sidewalk they're proposing doesn't really help 'cause we already have it. It's more about the driver behavior, the curve, the hill. It's just a really dangerous place. And that's evident in the information from the highway safety with the hundred and fifty accidents in three years. So.
Penelope, I wanna thank you for your delivery. Um, a lot of that, some of the information you've provided us previous. And I think it's really important to recognize, we haven't voted for this. We voted it down previously. But I want it known that we study those things that you just brought to us repeatedly. We have a planning commission that has an outstanding record of looking through every ounce of data that can be obtained to ensure that any development that's approved by them before it comes to us has been thoroughly reviewed. Then it comes to us and we make a decision. So I don't want there to be any mistake made, that there's no haphazard decisions made here. Now, we will each have an individual vote and we will make a decision based on the information that we have had to review. So thank you so much and we appreciate the thoughtfulness and the way that you've presented yourself. We thank you.
Thank you. And I just, it's one of the ones that I see every day and that's kinda why we wanna.
I drive past your neighborhood every day.
So you know what we do. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Susan Roselaw, the Beaver Creek LLC developer, resident developer. Um, I always come in and asking, um, again, for a referral until further notice. Um, we've finally been able to make contact with the HOA and sent out a mass email on Friday that HOA did on the other half. And, um, so I'm really kinda looking at a different product or a different site plan to do less impact and try to kinda compromise. And thank goodness the dialogue is finally open so we can hopefully come to a resolution that brings less impact to the whole community.
We thank you so much. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Say your name in three minutes.
Yes, my name is Wink Ray. I reside here in Fort Mill at Twenty Forty Barnes Lane. And, uh, I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak before council in regards to the Beaver Creek subdivision. Uh, this evening, we would respectfully request a deference of the annexation. Um, hopefully you'll give that consideration. There's any questions?
Any questions for Wink? Thank you so much for being here.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hey. Uh, my name is Karen Muir. Uh, just have a statement, wanna reach out to you guys. Good evening, thank you for your time tonight. I came to share my personal feelings about this proposed annexation. We've all seen the growth that Fort Mill has and is experiencing. It's beautiful and abundant and exciting to witness. But can I ask you, when do we start making decisions based on something other than profit? Let me give you a perspective free from that. I walk or drive my child to school that accounts for full two trips back and forth in a day. Let me tell you what I see. I see a sea of smiling faces, proof of parents excitedly jumping into the day. One thing I always see is a wooden cross with flowers laid beneath. I see that four times a day. Right on Pleasant Road, this is a memorial for a child that was hit at the crosswalk of Pleasant and Whitley and died not too long ago. I see it four times a day. And now here we are, ready to add more bodies, houses and cars on an already dangerous intersection. Dangerous to whom? Our kids, who walk it every day. Even with the streetblock, crosswalks and traffic lights, people still abuse the speed limit and often ignore the crosswalk, even with the crossing guards that our neighbor has supplied. This proposed annexation will only add more stress and uncertainty, less ability to an already dangerous situation. I need you to understand that our children are also walking past that memorial. I wonder what they think about when they pass by this four times a day. I wonder if they feel safe or important. I wonder if they think our local elected officials care about their safety and right to thrive. I know I certainly wonder. Please consider the safety of our children over profit and deny this request today.
Ma'am.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but you've used that word twice and I can't help myself.
Can I just finish my statement?
No, I want to address it because I'm afraid if you finish your statement, you're gonna turn and you're gonna walk without the profit word being addressed. There's not a person on this council. You said that our council needs to pay attention to safety and you wonder about that. We're listening carefully. There's no profit to be made on this council. The safety is our very first mission statement. That accident that occurred on Pleasant Road was a tragedy. It was horrible. There are crossing guards at other school crossings that have been hit by cars as well. Traffic is an issue. You're correct. But there is no profit to be made, so I wanna correct that before you finish.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I wonder how your children or grandchildren would feel passing by a child's memorial four times a day, all year long? How many memorials are we willing to allow in the name of the almighty dollar? I'm gonna stick to that. Please do the right thing and deny this request. Our children are watching. Thank you.
Exactly what I.
Evening, how are you guys doing today?
Good.
My name's Theo Moore, resident of Whitley Mills. Uh, thank you very much for taking some time to listen to us today to talk about our views about the, about the proposed construction. I, I already know, you guys have already discussed the traffic safety issues. They're significant. Uh, where, especially with the entrances, talking, where we're talking about putting the entrances, it makes that intersection, we already, we who live there and see it every day, drive through it every day, very much concerned about the congestion there and about the safety there. This would only tend to compound the situation and make it worse. Really think that's a horrifically bad idea. Um, the, the safety, I won't also, I won't review. We've already discussed, I've already, I've been listening outside, so I've heard, know you guys have discussed the safety issues that people, uh, children have been hit. I have no doubt in my mind that you're compassionate beings and you're aware, the way the parents feel and the kind of fear that we have about the congestion in that area. Certainly won't try to suggest you don't. But I'm asking you to try to definitely keep that in consideration. Um, the one thing I would point out that maybe no one else has mentioned, people along our community, along that fence line or along that line, pay premiums. They paid six thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand dollars, Amber Eyes, over thirty years to have a lot that backed up against the woods. A putting housing there would basically be taking money out of their investment, it'd be taking money out of their pockets and rob them of some of their property values. I think that's unjust. I think that's completely unjust. Um, I, I feel that you're probably aware of this already, um, but we bear the consequences of the decisions you make. Um, we have to live with whatever you decide that we do or is going to be done. Um, much in the same way that you would be very angry or upset or unhappy if a neighbor decided to cut down a tree that you share on the property line. You'd be upset. You know, you'd resolve that issue with your neighbor or maybe you'd just leave the tree. But the idea is that we have a very, we understand that we are not part of, we don't vote for you guys. I get that. I, we totally get, understand that for certain and we respect that. But we're your neighbors. We live next to you. You know, you live in Fort Mill. And we'd really like to see some, like, let's have some considerations, some neighborly consideration there. And let's, maybe, we think it's a bad idea. Sorry, I tripped over my words, but. Um, again, if that's all I really have to say, um, I thank you very much for your time.
I think your words are kind and we always appreciate that. I think the only time I get riled is when we are being pointed out as someone that's uncaring or not thorough in our evaluation. Um, we are.
Or out for the almighty dollar. It's not while we do this.
Sorry, that's.
It's not for money.
I get my hackles up, something fierce, because it's not true.
I do have a question for you. You talked about the lot premium that you paid. The property behind you, were you told that it was productive and would not be developed?
Uh, I don't live on that area myself. Um, and I understand that specifically. Uh, one of the gentlemen, for example, I spoke with earlier today, he paid six thousand dollars for his lottery. Uh, my understanding from communicating with him was that would remain a wooded area. Um, I cannot speak to that. I did not sign, I, I don't live on that strip. I can't say it. But it's about a concern, I think maybe you should be looking at it.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I know my agent, when I purchased my home, told me that behind me would be undeveloped because of the way it is zoned behind my house.
Right.
It cannot be developed. And I just wanna make sure that that is the case. So Penelope, you've got some insight to that?
I believe what the resident is talking about, there's protected open space for the Whitley Mills on their side, which is part of their HOA. I think that's what he's referring. Um, this property that is coming for annexation does not affect the already promised open space for the Whitley Mills.
Okay, just wanted to be sure because whether it's us or at another time or the county where it currently resides, there is a good likelihood somebody will want something built on it at some point.
There are no guarantees.
So, yes.
You see how, um, this section right here, that's protected.
I see.
Behind those locks.
I see.
And we're not fighting for this to happen. We're trying to be thorough and trying to listen to the concerns of those that live adjacent and you are our neighbor. Otherwise, we wouldn't be hearing you. You know, it's very clear in our code that it's, this is a forum for the people that are residents of Fort Mill. But we feel a kinship to those that are in the Fort Mill area. So we do want to hear. But I, I love the fact that you've been very kind, very thoughtful and very wise in your words. And those are the things that help us make better decisions. So I thank you for being respectful. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciate your time. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Mm-hmm, you too.
Hello, I'm Cindy Dole and I live in the townhomes, um, on the Whitley Mills, um, townhomes. I've lived there for ten years and, um, I have seen in the last ten years, all of the things that, the, the roads that have, um, been so congested. Thank heavens we finally got a, um, a, a light there after the death of, of the young man. Um, as a former teacher, I'm concerned about the safety of those things, but also just the, the traffic that happens, um, on, on that road. We have an elementary school, a middle school. Now we would have this too, um, all going onto a two-lane road. Um, it just seems like it's over. It's way overdone. Um, so that's, that's all I wanted to say. I, I did approve of the annexation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say your name and you have three minutes. Oh, we're a Rose family. Just right here, just now. I understand your short patience and I am here just because I'm a resident of the townhouses and impossible to imagine what the traffic would be like outside of two schools there. Our plan, the one-plant family homes and the whatever this proposal looks like, because I just saw it. Fifty-two additional, I, I can't even imagine. That's all I have to say.
And what was your name, ma'am?
Catherine Thompson.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's it for the annexation.
There are no further, um, people wanting to speak, so we will close the public hearing at this point in time. I will need a motion for the first reading of the residents annexing the York County Tax Map Number Six Five Three Zero Zero, Zero Zero Two One Zero.
Do we need to make a motion to defer?
That depends on how you wanna make your motion. We have been requested to defer. If you would like to see this item deferred, then I would need that motion.
I make a motion to defer item number one.
Okay, we have a motion to defer item number one. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Um, and then for discussion and part of that deferment, do we need to assign a date to it? Or can we leave it open-ended?
I would, I would suggest assigning a date at this time. You know, I get that time, at that meeting there and extend that date if you need.
Did we assign a date last time?
We did.
We've signed it.
Yes, to this time.
Okay. Um, you made the motion. Would you like to assign a date to it?
Uh, do it for the July nineteenth. I'm sure.
Twelve, twelve.
Okay, I now have a motion to defer to July the twelfth. Lisa, do you second that motion again?
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or considerations?
Will any, um, changes, will that give ample time, Penelope, for them to be vetted, discussed before? I mean, I don't want to keep going through this every four weeks. In other words, that's what I'm.
If there's changes to the actual proposal, then you would have to give that to.
They'd have to start over, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I am, um, I understand every person that I have a wooded area at the back of my home, but it's owned by someone that could sell it any day, any day. And it would change the property value of my home. It would change the livability of my home. I understand that. I've spoken to all but one of you individually. Somebody was on vacation. I tried the last time. And I've asked council to please, um, seek the, the benefits of the town in any decision we make. You know, so I think we, we've got to be considerate to those that aren't in our, in our jurisdiction but are affected. our jurisdiction, but are affected. The gentleman said it properly, the decisions we make affect those that are adjacent to our community. Um, I don't know about changes. I do know we voted this down a year ago, and we've been met with this decision a couple of times. So another month's deferment doesn't bother me, but it would to to Councilman Moody's point, I don't want to deal with this month to month. This is, this is a no decision.
I understand that, but also you made the statement that Wink was talking about making it fifty-five.
Well, there are things that they could change about their proposal, but again, they would have to start over. So it wouldn't be a July decision if they pull it to start over.
Right.
So um, giving them another thirty days, uh, I guess the only thing that concerns me is, I've been told by more than one that the HOA and the residents were not interested in talking to the developers at all. And we were told two different things this evening, that, oh, yes, they've been open, and no, they had not. So, you know, that's between them. That doesn't have anything to do with this council and the decisions we make for an annexation. We need to make decisions on an annexation that's beneficial to the people in our own town, in Fort Mill. So um, I personally don't have a problem with a thirty-day extension, but I do not want to go beyond that anymore. We need to make a firm decision. So your motion is to defer until the July 12th meeting, and Lisa, you have seconded that.
Seconded for this.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
So if we vote against the deferral...
Then we have to vote on the first reading.
First reading of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's for the annexation portion of it. Um, understanding that item number two is on the same property, but in how it will be zoned, um, what is the difference of the consequences of the deferral between the two? Because it's two different things, one's annexation and one's how it's planning to be used.
Have to defer both, right?
Yeah. Because it goes together. I mean, this one that you're hearing first, the public hearing with annexation, the second part is the actual um, development standards, and here's the MXU, Pleasant, Whitley, MXU. But they do go, they go together as well.
Yes, ma'am.
We'd have to defer to... Number one and then number two.
And we have a public hearing for for that one as well.
Yeah.
For the second one?
Yes, ma'am.
It concerns me that somewhere, even among ourselves, we're trying so hard to listen and to do the things that we think are meaningful, that we forget there is a process in place. You know, when it comes to this council, the Planning Commission has looked at it specifically for the codes and zones and terms and changes, and and that's where their approval brings it to us. If they had not gone through and looked at traffic and, you know, wetlands and geological studies and and the things that, you know, have been questioned, it wouldn't come to us. It wouldn't be in our lap, okay? So I have a tremendous amount of respect for the Planning Commission's thoroughness and and careful evaluation of everything that comes before them. That doesn't always mean, as we've recently evidenced, it doesn't mean we're going to agree with it. Um, but I I do want to make certain, because, you know, we're in a public setting, we are to be transparent, then I think that that also should include transparency to what the functionality is of a project landing on this bench for all of us to review. It has already been through a tremendous amount of discussion and consideration. So I don't want to do any harm to the the Planning Commission. I think it is for us to make a decision on what's right for Fort Mill. So um, currently, we have one motion on the table.
Can I just ask, but do they, just because I don't know, but do they take into consideration all of the traffic?
Of course.
Behind the, you know, the schools?
They have to.
Anything we take in to consideration as well?
They wouldn't be able to have, have requirements for traffic changes or additional lanes or turn signals if they didn't. They can't just do it because it looks nice. They have to have...
I think that they have some.
Yeah. No, they, they are the keeper of those documents and that research. It then comes to us to make a decision on, is it right for Fort Mill based on our policies and our mission? Those, those five things that I've sent to everybody and said, these are the things we seem to agree on, is our mission as a town council. And safety and fiduciary responsibility and quality of life, those are the things we base our decisions on.
And um, and thinking about those things the last couple of days, if we do do the annexation, then we got to add more staff, these...
We have to serve them.
Yeah, we have to serve them in all areas.
Any, any property that becomes a part of the town of Fort Mill then gets the same services, and and we tax people differently in the town than live in the county, because we provide additional services. That's exactly why.
They should be on town watering sewer, right?
No.
That's what I wanted to ask, because I know they're in county right now.
That um, if you are a county, that will be providing...
County water on that area.
I just wanted to make sure, okay.
But everything else would be county.
Yeah.
They provide sewer, they provide a sewer too?
County as well.
So in the county, and then this is kind of a different caveat a little bit, if you're living in this proposal, proposed neighborhood, are your rates different than what you would pay? I mean, I guess you're paying the county rate, not a town, so yeah, they would be. I mean, it's totally out of our control. Yeah.
So is Whitley, Billy's on county?
Whitley Mills is on the county. Mm-hmm, everything on that side of the road.
Yeah, I didn't know whether it was on Will's, or whatever.
No, we don't have any service beyond the schools.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, the motion on the table is to defer to our July 12th evening meeting, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It is a tie. No, there's three of us, sorry.
Three.
I can't even count tonight. Yeah, three and two, sorry. Penelope, yes, would you make sure that there's a note that's given to the applicant that says it will be last?
Right.
Vote that we take on this particular item?
Okay.
Thank you. No further deferment. Thank you. All right, now we will move to new business item number two, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant-Whitley MXU project, Ward Two, Ronnie Helms. We will open the public hearing at this point in time, and we're waiting to see if we have anyone that would like to speak to this portion. Councilman Cook is correct, these two are tied together.
Right.
Same tract of land.
Counsel, my name is, my name is Wink Ray. I live in Fort Mill, 2040 Bonds Lane. I again would like to thank you for the opportunity to address you in regards to Beaver Creek subdivision. We again respectfully request a deference of the zoning of the property. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Everybody have a pleasant evening.
Hope you do.
No one else?
No one else. Uh, we have no one else that is interested in speaking on this particular item. This is item number two. We will close the public hearing. We will now ask for a motion on the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant-Whitley MXU project.
Make a motion to defer until July 12th.
We have a motion to defer until July 12th.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Okay, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So three, two. Okay. All right. New business item number three, 2021 Independence Day Celebration Resolution. A resolution designating Main Street as the site of a public festival at which alcoholic beverages may be consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music, sound amplifying equipment, and fireworks on July 3rd, 2021. Jacana Hester is our subject matter expert. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item number three.
Okay, do I have, have a a a motion to approve and a second? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It's unanimous. New business item number four, Amendment of Agreement to Fund Municipal Court Attorney for 2021, 2022 Fiscal Year. Davy Broome is our subject matter expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new, new business item number four.
Approve? Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any questions for Davy on our uh, funding of the municipal court attorney? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you so much. All right, there are no information discussion items. Please note, we do have one executive session item, discussions of negotiations, incident to proposed contractual matters with Crossroads Development Partners LLC. I will need a motion to go into executive session, and note that there are no votes taken in executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, got a motion? And a second. We will return into public session. All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your patience, and I'll entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
Make a motion to go back in regular session.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session. Thank you so much for your patience and attendance. Uh, prior to adjournment, um, Lisa, do you have anything for the good of the whole? And the schools be careful last week? Trudy?
I do not.
Chris Moody?
I do not. I'm glad to see everybody face-to-face today.
Yes. Ronnie Helms? Only two things I had were, I would like to thank um, our first responders and Duke Power this morning. We had a couple of accidents that took out the power to an elementary school and um, several city facilities and quite a few homes, and their response was so quick. I am just grateful um, for our folks and for Duke Power getting us back into action on a day that turned out to be pretty hot. So I'm very grateful for that. I would also like to ask everyone, now that we are able to go back and sit in a restaurant, I am back on Main Street watching people drive up and down Main Street, and I'm just here to tell you, it's a racetrack, guys. And if we can't do, uh, if we can't mitigate and do a better job, I'm going to find out about cameras and license plates and tag numbers and fines, because that is a congested area with pedestrians. It is dangerous. I've never, it's worse than it was before the pandemic. So please, uh, slow down on Main Street. Give some respect to the people that are there, that we all enjoy the the benefits of of our downtown. And, on a positive note, I have noticed that our road sides are looking much better. The litter pickup program certainly has had some very pleasing results. I've seen people bagging trash, wearing their vests this past Saturday. Um, thank you all for caring about our community as a whole. Council members, we are grappling with a lot of issues and making some difficult decisions, and I'm just grateful for your efforts and your time, uh, for everyone that that pitches in to try, and our staff, to try to help us make the best decisions we can for the good of the whole. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Congratulations, our graduates. Oh, yes, true. And happy birthday, mama.